So I'm gonna call the Woodbury Slickboard Meeting on Monday, July 14th, 2025 at 6 o'clock to order. Just because we have a big agenda tonight, I'm gonna try to keep us on track and on point. So don't take offense if I move us on from a topic, but otherwise, we're gonna be here for a long time. I'd like to welcome Dan Kaineman and Lucas Goldfuss.
Yep.
Yep, from the Winuski Natural Resources Conservation District. They have a presentation that they're gonna do after we get through this other beginning portion. The second thing we need to do is address any adjustments to the agenda. The only adjustment I have is on their other business. I'm just gonna add the Animal Control Officer. Is there anything else?
I thought you just decided not to talk.
Well, I think we'll talk about it here. You know. The next item is to approve minutes from the June 23rd meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, is there any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the June 23rd meeting, please say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Here's your conference.
Thank you.
So seeing as we don't really have, John, unless you'd like to do any public comment stuff.
Yes.
Yeah, let's do it.
I have two things. One of those I just did, I asked, I wanted to get a copy of the payment for Title Search and all that. I need that paperwork so I can submit it for reimbursement, since I've got that paperwork to, so I can submit things now.
Yep.
I did our financial study report. And then, let's see, I've got the information lawyer from Diana, so that's been forwarded. And the only other thing I had was, I heard there were some questions floating around after the last meeting after I zipped out, because it was so hot in that room. And so I figured I would just maybe myself available for that, if not, I'll get out of your way.
I don't recall.
I don't remember any.
Any questions, unless you've heard scuttlebutt that you need to address. I don't remember anything.
Some discussion and some questions about who's buying what and how's that getting paid for and whatnot.
That was probably a conversation with Reddit and Paul, and I think they answered.
Yeah.
We started to know.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Somebody else might be.
So I figured I would make myself available. But right now, it's still, once the appraiser reaches out to me, then we'll get that. And that's the next concrete step. And like I said, the lawyer's selected now, and they're in contact with the state, so we'll start, we'll write up that. And then, as stuff comes through, I'll submit for personal.
So have you heard from the appraiser at all?
Not yet.
Okay.
I think if we're on, if we're still, if he's still on his timeline, we've still got a week or two.
And so you were looking for the invoice from the appraiser, so you could submit?
No, I was actually looking for the lawyer that did Title Search.
Got it, yeah.
So I could submit that, since that's already been done and been paid. And state wants us to move stuff through as it gets billed, so that I can pay stuff as quickly as possible. So I just figured I'd ask for that, get that submitted.
And I can attach it to an email to you?
Yep.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna be submitting electronically anyway.
Okay.
Alright.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. See ya.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to the Town Clerks Report.
We have a list of dogs that have not been registered for this year. It looks like there's maybe... This many?
A bunch.
Yep. And it's okay with the select board, we're gonna turn that list over to Ed.
Michelle, Elizabeth Case, her dog died.
Ed, do this, our animal control person.
Oh, okay. That's Elizabeth's dog.
Yes.
I thought it was John's.
Oh, my Pimbrock. Olivia Pimbrock.
Maybe we could talk about that during the Animal Control Officer question too.
I know Michelle Batteet keeps saying that she's gotta get down here.
She does it every day.
In the parking lot, yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty sure Elizabeth Case's dog died, but...
And today I received an email from Patricia Moulton, the Flood Recovery Officer for Central Ma Agency Administration. They are going to be having a free lunch and learn webinar on the 28th to inform people how to better go about getting stuff out on the front porch forum.
How to use front porch forum?
Yeah, so like, if we put something out there on front porch forum, how we can forward it to, let's say, Cabot or Walden or wherever. Just so they know that there's an emergency in the vicinity.
So how do they give you lunch in a webinar? I'd like to know about that. I guess superhero lunch.
And we also had two different complaints about Aidsworth's Road.
About what?
Aidsworth's Road.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Did you get both of them?
I did get both of them, yeah.
I don't think I only got one.
I thought I only got one.
Well, you probably only got the one from the resident, and the other one from the health department.
Okay, I think those were all in one email when I got them.
Yeah, I got both of those in the same email. Okay.
I forwarded that along to you.
I think one of them's been cleaned up. But I keep thinking of turning a drive-by and then I forget. Someone told me it had been cleaned up, because after the first complaint came in, it was more than just bags. It was bags that had been broken open.
Is that what this one is, Chris?
Yep.
Dogs or bears or whatever.
Yeah, or neighbors. And then, this goes back to June 27th, I received a municipal heart and ride grant for 2026. I don't know if that's anything that the town's interested in looking into. We have until August 26th, if you so desire.
We've never seen a need for one in the past.
Well, maybe worth looking into, especially if we're gonna have any kind of...
Where would you put it?
I don't know. I'm just thinking about, we've talked about, you know, maybe limiting parking at the town office, so that would be potentially an alternative.
And that's what I have for tonight.
When I looked at that grant, I feel like there was an amount that we would be qualified for. I can't remember, but it wasn't much.
Wasn't much?
It wasn't much money.
Okay, got it.
But we should look at it again.
So anyway, they did put trash down under the updates and other business.
Yeah, thank you.
Talk about that when we get there.
So we're gonna, John is running late, but he will be along for the update on the website. But we'll just move on to our presentation, you guys introduced earlier, so thanks again for coming.
Cool, no, we appreciate you all letting us come and talk a little bit about what's happening on the lake. So we, Lucas and I are from the Winuski Natural Resources Conservation District. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Lake Watershed Action Plan that's happening on Woodbury Lake this summer. So just a little bit of history on the conservation districts in general. These are entities that were formed out of the Dust Bowl in the 1930s, basically. And the federal government asked each of the states to set up these districts in order to help people better take care of their land, because they recognized that had people taking better care of their land in the 30s, that the Dust Bowl wouldn't have been as bad as it was. So Vermont has 14 districts that cover every inch of the state. We are the Winuski District, and we're the biggest. We're the one right there in the middle. So we cover Chitting County, Washington County, and a couple of towns in Orange County. Basically, the Winuski River Basin and then Chitting County is effectively what it is, which includes Woodbury. Currently, there are four of us, I'm the district manager, we have Lucas, who's our conservation specialist. Then we actually have two people, Kara and Heather, who both work mostly with farmers, so we do a lot of farmer outreach. And we are actually a special unit of government, so we are managed by an elected board of supervisors. So there's five supervisors, and each year, one of those positions comes up for election. And anyone who lives in our district can petition and run for election as one of our supervisors. So currently, those are five, and then we have three associate supervisors who are not voting members, who are just have expertise that tonight will report.
Yeah, so the Winuski NRCD, kind of just to sum it up in a brief synopsis, is we promote the wise use of sustainable development and conservation of our district's natural resources. So natural resource management projects such as forestry, agriculture, urban conservation, stormwater, clean water projects. There's a little statement on the bottom, which gives a little more insight, but yeah, perfect. Keep it nice and short. This is an example of one of the projects that we really try and focus on is Trees for Streams, which is basically, we have access to a funding pool to help promote stream buffer restoration. This is an example of an undercut bank. As many of you probably know, trees are great on streams, because they filter water, provide habitat, obviously stabilize the bank, prevent erosion. So just some insight into one of the projects we do.
Another thing we do with watersheds is resiliency surrounding both flooding and aquatic habitats. So we replace culverts to allow surface passage and to upsize them, basically to accept larger flows of water, so they're better at dealing with floods. We also removed a dam last year up in Washington, and so that's something we do not super often, because it's a really expensive project, but we do that from time to time as well.
Oh yeah, okay, so in terms of agriculture assistance, just a little bit of insight there. We do do nutrient management planning, helping farmers measure their manure, and then helping them do those calculations and better understand how to manage their land. Also putting them in touch with resources and providing technical assistance.
And we work also with farmers on flood resiliency. So we're working right now with a couple of farms in Richmond to try to like stabilize their banks, because they're losing a lot of farmland as it floods every year. And so, these are not pictures of Richmond, Vermont, but it's an example of what we're, we kind of plan on doing, rip wrapping, armoring the banks, so that they stop losing their farmland to the river.
Yeah, so today we're talking about Saban Pond, also known as Woodbury Lake, which we've come to find out. Basically, the Lake Watershed Action Plan is a study which identifies areas of vulnerability, but also areas of resilience on the lake, and just helping to promote water quality in general, and improve water quality, and you know, identify, you know, areas for projects.
So where do you get the name Saban Pond?
That's what the state calls it, and I don't know why.
The Saban family.
I know, I know, but nobody used that name in reality for a long, long time.
Exactly, yeah.
It's just confusing for people.
It's its original name.
What?
So it's its original name.
I know, a lot of lakes have other old names, but...
Yeah, so all the contracts and paperwork.
I just wonder how vague that got.
We do, in my emails, it'll be Saban Pond slash Woodbury Lake.
Yeah, no, we recognize that nobody calls it Saban Pond.
I call it Saban.
You're an old timer now.
Yeah, just a little bit more into the, we call it LWAP, Lake Watershed Action Plan. It's road assessments, wetland assessments, stream, June, work rate assessments, and then lakefront property assessments. And this is a partnership with consultants that we have coming out and doing it. So this is, oh, I guess I can probably talk about what, it's free, non-regulatory. Nobody has to do anything on the lake, there's no, there's, it's basically us just going out and assessing areas of the watershed. It's like, at no cost to any landowner. We're just identifying areas to improve water quality, and then, you know, also look at the good stuff, areas of resilience, and what we can promote. Yeah.
So in terms of this specific Lake Watershed Action Plan on Saban Pond slash Woodbury Lake, the watershed for Woodbury Lake is actually reasonably large, so it includes Saban Pond, Woodbury Lake itself, but it also includes Valley Lake, includes Greenwood Lake, and a bunch of other smaller lakes besides. So you can see an outline of it here on the left, and then that's like the satellite image on the right, so you can kind of get a sense of where we're looking and what the watershed is.
But Nelson Pond is in a different watershed?
Yeah, it's in a different watershed. Right next door, but it's in a watershed, yeah.
Yeah, what's the difference?
Yeah, and that may be a future, a future study, but for this...
What's the shaman's flame on?
I have no idea. It showed up on Google Earth, which is where I got that from.
It's the temple on Cranberry Meadows Road. Isn't it the show, the...
It might be Peter Clark's.
Isn't it? Oh, it's not the temple. Maybe I'm lying to you.
So there are a couple of phases or steps to this process. And the first one, Lucas and I met with state scientists and state regulators to figure out what their interests were and kind of the things that they thought were priorities here as we looked at the lake this summer. And we did that in May, and then we completed what's called a desktop assessment. So that's looking at maps and previous studies to try to figure out what might potentially be areas of improvement, so that we can prioritize where we look this summer, because we don't have an infinite amount of time. And we also did that in May. And then the next step is to kind of bring the community together, and this is gonna happen this week. On Thursday, I think the 17th is Thursday, we've got an online meeting for as many people who would like to come as can come, both from this body, from Calis, regular citizens who ever wants to come.
But that's gonna be online?
That'll be online.
That's unfortunate, I think, because people, especially this time of year, with lakefront property and there's bee in their camp, they might be more likely to come, but we'll see.
Yeah, well, so we will also into the Calis Select Board. Lucas is gonna go to the Lake Station Barbecue this weekend, so we'll be at other places too. But the kind of the official kickoff meeting, so to speak, will be online at 4:00 Thursday. And that's just to see how we did on the desktop assessment, if there's anything we missed, if there's anything the community thinks we should look at, or things they're really proud of that they want to bring to our attention, all that, right? So that's just kind of let people know what's happening. And then, as the summer progresses, we're gonna do assessments on all those different components, right? So we'll do assessments of wetlands, and we're working with some other contractors to help us as well. But wetlands assessments, roads assessments, stream assessments, and then lake shore property assessments. And that will just happen kind of throughout the course of the summer. Lucas actually is the one leading the lake shore property assessments, so if you have a lake shore property and want him to come and just have a look and see how you're doing, feel free to reach out to Lucas. That's a Lake Wise Award right there on the left. You get an award if your property is really well taken care of.
Yeah, and just kind of like bounce off that a little bit. They're basically called Lake Wise Assessments, and it's just like, it's four different categories, and I'll go through it with like the landowner. And it's not necessarily to like identify bad things about the property, but just like if a landowner is more interested in learning about, you know, how to renaturalize their shoreline, or, you know, how to, you know, just create a buffer on their lawn, or what species to influence. So it's a really awesome program, again, completely free and non-regulatory, and yeah, excited about doing it.
Yeah.
Would you have any suggestions on how to keep the geese off their properties?
Yeah, you let it grow. Completely enough, because geese don't, geese feel scared from predators. So like, if you let it grow, they only will go in like manicured lawn areas.
A lawn?
So once, if you let it grow into a meadow, then the geese won't even, won't even go in into the, into the high grass, because they're scared they're gonna get, get got.
They like the manicured lawns.
They like, they only like lawns, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. So once we get all those assessments done this fall, we'll kind of synthesize all the information we got, come up with a list of what we think the priority areas are for maybe future projects. And then we'll have another community meeting sometime in the fall to bounce that off the rest of the community and say, how did we do, right? Did we miss something still? What do you think about these priorities? And then, once we've incorporated that feedback, there'll be a published action plan this, we're hoping this winter. Some of this could bleed over into next summer too, but we're really trying to open, hoping to get it done this summer.
So in an action plan, you mean there might be actually things that you would finance for people to help them regitate their lawns?
Correct, so this is the idea, and the idea is that we come up with a list of projects, and then we, at the Conservation District, will stick around to try to help people find money to do it.
Oh.
That's the plan. So, that's the hope.
Try to find... Like Dan said, lots of our work is pretty much being that liaison between the landowner and municipality and helping them find that money to make projects happen.
You have resources for finding money?
Well, it's, yeah, the state has some money that's available from different sources. We can never guarantee that we'll be able to find some unfunding, but we can always promise to look, so.
Yeah, yeah, but final step, we help find funding to complete projects. This is the dam removal, and then this is the planting afterwards. So just an example of, you know, not only coordination and design of projects, but also, you know, working to that final implementation stage.
And so just to hit some kind of points home a second time, so the assessment process is completely paid for by the state. It costs the town nothing, and it costs the landowners nothing. Entirely non-regulatory, we're looking for voluntary projects. We're not gonna send any, you know, regulatory people your way, we're not gonna find you, we're not gonna tell people about your issues, so that they can find you. It's entirely non-regulatory. There is a lot of funding right now in the state of Vermont for projects that improve water quality. So we're gonna try to help people take advantage of those to get some projects done in the coming years. Basically, the Watershed Action Plan is a roadmap, right? So it's a step one, we come up with a list of projects, and then we try to like do those projects and pick away at them over time. And this is really a community-based assessment, right? So the more info we can get from the community, the better the action plan's gonna be in the end, because you all know this part of the world much better than any of us could coming in from the outside, as much as we're going to try.
But some of you know, like, engineering solutions that might help people, or?
Potentially, yeah, and if we don't know that, we can kind of make the connection with other engineering firms that we work with to, if it's a really big problem that requires engineering design, then...
Right, like for roads, it'd be more engineering, but I think, you know, around the lake, like actual defined shoreline would be more like bioengineering solutions, like soft scapeing. So, you know, buffer, just not hardscape concrete and engineer work, but it differs among, you know, areas of vulnerability, I guess.
For sure.
Yeah, so these are just, how can you, how can you help and/or participate? The best way is to spread the word. I have some flyers that I will print out and send. I didn't bring a physical copy today, but I would like to stress that we want to get these lake shore assessments done. Like, we want to get out to properties and like speak to them about the Lake Watershed Action Plan, help them understand what's going on, be transparent with them. So like, if there's people walking around the lake that are, you know, in high vis, like on the stream, like not to be alarmed, it's all completely non-regulatory. Just really stressing transparency and getting out to the public and talking to folks about, you know, the lake and their concerns, I think is the overall theme here.
And again, if they have things that they're really proud of, tell us about those too, because they can make their way into the action plan as well, right? Things that are going really well now, we want to keep them going well.
Yeah, but the free Lake Wise Assessments is like one thing to take home. It's like, these, you know, completely free assessments, we'll go out, we'll talk to you about your property, and write up a technical report for you to help you better understand, you know, renationalization.
So do you like ask people where their septic is going?
Essentially, it's one, or it's one of the questions. It's not really a question, it's just like telling people, make sure you pump every like three to five years, is an example or something. You know, not everyone does it, but just like in good practice, there are like some questions for the homeowner, and then, you know, there's, you know, answering questions that they might have about the property. It assesses, so I can go up there like really quickly, it's looking at the drive-by, looking at the roof, looking at the, we say recreation area, so area kind of between the shoreline and the housing structure, and then the actual shoreline buffer area, like their lake shore. So houses that aren't on the lake shore are not eligible for the Lake Wise Assessment.
So we have a situation in a lake neighborhood that I think Alfie's still working on, that Wilbur Road one? I mean, there's a road, a road that goes behind Woodbury Lake. And a couple of times, in the last couple of floods, there've been runoffs that have come down through the yards of several, four or five different camps, and right into the lake. And of course, they all keep their lawns, they have very small lawns anyways, but they keep their little beach areas clean as much as they can, but then they get flooded a couple of times. I don't know if that's something you'd like to see happening, is that, is that happening? Is that another grant?
Yeah, that's a Better World Trade. It's gonna happen this summer.
It's gonna happen this summer?
Yep. And it's pretty much addressing the water that flows downhill from the underside's culvert. The Emergency Watershed Protection Program didn't see that site as being worthy of their program, but... That was one of the site visits for that particular...
And that program only applies if the house is basically like falling into the river. And so it's a very high bar you have to get down through, get that money.
But yeah, kind of overall goal is participate, you know, questions and yeah.
Any information we can get from you all would be great, yeah.
Do other districts do the same kind of programs?
Yeah, for sure, on different lakes, obviously, in different parts of the state. But yeah, they do some of the similar things, and they also work with farmers, just like we do. They do stream forest plantings like we do. The districts do, tend to do similar things throughout the state, though we're all slightly different, because we're run by boards of locals, right? And different areas have different concerns, but the law probably do similar things.
At this time, are you guys only looking at Woodbury Lake? Are you also looking at the other two lakes you mentioned that are within that watershed?
We have not been out to either, I don't think.
Dream what you're talking about.
Yeah, but we would, we would love to.
Okay, just curious about, like, for people that might be interested in the webinar, I was curious if it would be...
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Part of the problem is, I think, trying to get, like, to reach people, like, in certain areas, just because we don't live in the area, so things like this is like good connections. Like, if you have a contact list of folks out there that'd be interested, like, I would totally just like invite them to the meeting, email them, reach out to them, see if they're interested. Like, the more people that are there, the...
Does every lake have a lake association?
Uh, I think they all do.
Greenwood Lake does, and Woodbury Lake does.
And Dog Pond does, Valley Lake does.
Yeah, so there's usually a president probably that would be able to maybe circulate a flyer for you guys, or?
Definitely, yeah. Super helpful. We've been in touch with the Woodbury Lake Lake Association. We haven't managed to get ahold of anyone from the other two lake associations.
Yeah, Amy, I think, first name.
Yep, Amy, Doctor Smith.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, I can't remember.
So, con tarring on the other two would be super helpful, because...
And Greenwood Lake, they have just changed their president.
Okay.
And I will find out who that is.
That'd be awesome, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, part of the issue is, like, some lakes don't have lake associations, so it's hard, you know, to reach out, because, you know, not be reached out.
Valley Lake have one?
Yeah, but I forgot who the president is. I can find out though. Yeah.
What are some of the suspects that you would use for a wetland area?
Yeah, so looking at, you know, is there a forested buffer, like, around the wetland? It's good to know whether that's true or not. Looking at the inputs into the wetland, are there like direct inputs of runoff from like a farm or something, like high nutrient levels directly into the runoff? Are there places in the wetland that appear to have been built in, right? Those are the kinds of things that they're looking for. Or potentially basic species, maybe something to look for, yeah.
I mean, between Greenwood and Woodbury, there's wetlands. You should take a trip down the, maybe not.
Dragging down Dog Pond Road or Cranberry Meadows Road would be...
Would it be valuable for you to get Robin, our town clerk's email?
Yeah.
And your email so you can forward along, the president from the Valley Lake?
I think I have you guys in an email.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, we, I got it for you on.
Okay, so I'll find out who the president is of the Valley Lake Association, and I will get you their contact information.
Yeah.
And do you have our email? I don't think I do. I can add my card here, which I always do. Right now, can give it out. Thank you very much. Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Lucas and Dan. Thanks, guys. Seems like a pretty valuable project.
Yeah.
For folks that are interested.
Yeah, no, we appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'm gonna move us along. You guys are welcome to stay, but I'm guessing you might want to have other things to do. Yeah, sure. So John's still finishing up a project, said he'd be here. I guess we can kind of get to, move on to opening bids for sand, the sand contract. Exciting.
So exciting.
Oh, this is McCullough's Insurance.
That goes with their, their dish.
They weren't sure, they had one in there, so they dropped off.
Do you want me to open this?
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Bye.
Should we read them for the camera?
Whoops, we didn't have a money on here for what's your bid, no. I mean, this, this one's. So we got McCullough crushing here, uh, sixteen dollars a yard.
I've got gravel construction with seventeen seventy-five a yard. Bid amount at the pit, oh, that's delivered, sorry, seventeen seventy-five delivered at the pit is nine dollars a cubic yard.
Was that, is that one delivered or is that a?
This one didn't have a delivered, it just, it's a different form. I don't know why they, they're using a form that says winter sand bed, three thousand cubic yards. I hope they didn't all say that, oh, they did. Oh, oh, no, they did, three thousand, doesn't say three years. I was worried that it said three years. Bids are due, so. Yeah, different, slightly different forms. So, nine dollars?
These are the only two? These are the only two that we got?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It'd be nice to get clarification on if that's a delivered price or if that's real pickup price, you know?
Thanks.
You can check in with Alfie too, see if he has any.
Please.
It says sixteen dollars a yard from McCullough, but it doesn't indicate whether that's at the pit or delivered. And then nine dollars at the pit for gravel or seventeen twenty?
Seventy-five.
Seventeen seventy-five, uh, delivered.
I mean, it would be good to verify, because it's about the money that it would take to truck it.
Yeah.
Like, you know, three, four dollars a yard. Might be good to verify that, because if they're planning on trucking it for sixteen, that's probably a pretty good deal.
Okay.
But it, but this form didn't give them that option, so I don't know if we're gonna go back now and tell them, ask them for another bid?
Can we just call and ask, just for clarification?
It's not really fair.
Why not?
Because we have asked for sealed bids.
Do we need to resend, uh, resend the bids? I guess we can't really do that.
Hmm, no, I, my hesitation on that would be, it's time, we got a new sand.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And how about the quality of, I thought we were gonna ask for some samples, I guess we didn't. What about the material?
Um, well, I've talked to Gravels about it, and they said that they're into a better thing with gravel. And so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, so they, that's all I've got. I mean, that's sort of a, sort of a left-handed promise that they're into better products. Last year I was not impressed with their product, and I let them know that. And they're telling me that they're into a better, better source.
And what do you know about McCullough's product?
Um, McCullough's is, I think they're mixing sand with granite. So the granite that they're taking off the hill up here, they're taking down to their pit and they're grinding it up into smaller pieces. Uh, I think the traction would be good. The problem with the, with the granite is that it's white. And you can sand all day long and it won't look like you sanded. So that I've noticed is a problem from other towns using it in the past. Because it's white, it's the same color as the snow, so it's hard to even know.
Does it soak up sun heat like sand will and kind of melt the, into the ice?
It does some, but not as much, because it's a lighter color. You know, the sun is a factor, the dark earth, snow.
So what's the problem with that? They're getting calls from the residents saying the roads need to be sanded?
Correct.
Okay.
They're saying, why didn't you sand today? How come I don't see no sand? You know, because you can't see it, it's the same color as the snow, so. You know, the truck goes through, it's sanded, but you can't really see it. That's, I mean, that's, when people are driving on the roads, they wanna see brown. They wanna see the color brown, it gives them a sense of, of security. But with the white sand, you don't have that, so that's one downfall from it. It does provide good traction, because it's gritty, so it does do that. Is it worth the, the extra money?
Well, how about the difference in trucking? I mean, the difference, if we truck it ourselves from a closer place versus a farther place?
Yes, that's.
Is that significant?
Yes. I mean, if we get it from McCullough's, it's three miles to McCullough's pit down there versus fifteen miles or so to, I mean, I haven't clocked it, I'm just trying to make a guess here, but. So it's definitely a substantial save.
You measured it from, to some of McCullough's pit, right?
Yeah, like we can ask if this.
It seems crazy not to.
Yeah, I think, I think we can make a phone call to say, is this sixteen yards, sixteen dollars a yard delivered? And then we just ask that question. Otherwise, I don't know how we make a decision.
Right.
Except that they weren't asked for a delivered price, they were just asked for a price.
So you think this sixteen dollars a yard is just not delivered, that is what it is?
I mean, isn't that what it says?
In that case.
Well, they're, the two forms are different.
I know, but what it says, winter sand bid, three thousand cubic yards. Bids are submitted in a sealed envelope, blah, 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 no faxes, bids are due, no later than. That's, that's all the same except for this, for some reason. This, nobody offered a discount percentage for early payment or anything.
So if we need a decision on this soon, could we make a decision that's conditional?
I could step outside and call them right now.
Okay, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense.
To verify if that's a delivered price or just at the pit.
I feel like that's, it's information.
If you wanted to move on to some other part of the agenda, I could.
Sure.
Okay, good to do that.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
Just so we're comparing everything.
For sure, and then just be sure not to like divulge the other.
No.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, yeah, yeah. I know you know that, but need to say it out loud.
Uh, I don't know which one, this one came with them.
Oh, this is the, the form that you've had?
Well, that was per, okay, hold on. This one, this was yours, I think this was part of mine. Getting them mixed up, this one was this.
So, McCullough was just the one page?
And I had a whole bunch of pages.
And, and all this was from Gravel?
This is pretty much just like our own bid, like this was our solicitation form.
Nothing in that says about delivery, like including a delivery.
Well, yeah, but this is the form that came with it, and this asked for delivered or not delivered.
I wonder if somebody in the office like hit some buttons on the computer and wiped out a couple of lines? Because it's the same form.
Yeah, but it's a form, it's, I don't know how we put it.
It's a different page too, that's weird.
One page, page four?
Yeah, I don't know. Weird.
Okay, they seem to wanna do that. Alfie, so why don't you?
Just to get an.
We can put that in McCullough's.
Okay.
Thanks, Alfie.
Yeah, if you wanna move on to something on the part.
We will.
Thank you.
We'll talk to John.
You need a minute, John? You take a minute? Yeah, all right.
I have your number, your pages here.
Sure? Just like that?
Oh, we're moving on to.
We're moving on, Skip.
So in your handout, let me see, I gave an update on disaster forty day town, which is a July twenty-four disaster. And, you know, that's in the sense, to see the last document that I signed is something called a project completion and certification report, which I quoted in your handout, certify, I certified all work and cost claim are eligible for grant funding. All work has been completed and all cost claim have been paid in full. So in that sense, we're done with FEMA. And so FEMA's share is seventy-five percent, which is eighty thousand dollars retrieved out. That's already in, in the treasurer's office. And the state funds total thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty-eight. We haven't seen that yet. But we've received everything from FEMA, which is cool.
Yeah, that's great.
So in a sense, all we've got to do with now is set up some state.
It's gotta feel good.
It does. So in summary, part three, just for this one-year project, FEMA staff included six program delivery managers, one insurance specialist, specialist, one mitigation officer, and one mitigation officer. So the total of eight FEMA staff worked on this project. So our recovery team, Alfie, myself and Danielle, forwarded ninety documents to FEMA and thirteen damage unit reports. So I backed up all the files last week onto a flash drive and they're in the vault now at the town offices. I also have an external hard drive at home that the files have backed up to as well. Any questions for our forty-eight town? Moving on to mitigation project, the RFP for roof replacement. And it was sent out, I think it's version three, I sent them, and incorporated all of your edits. And, you know, I guess it's okay, I haven't heard a lot from the select board. But anyhow, I also reached out to the historical society in Vermont. And they wrote back, and Diana Thangit would give me that study that was done in twenty twenty-two. Because it not only talked about the roof, but it talked about the town hall in general, what used to be done. But the only thing that FEMA can do really is the roof. Unfortunately, we can't do anything with the structure itself or the front steps or anything like that. So I reached out to the historic preservation office in La Jolla, because the report Diana gave me was dated as twenty twenty-two. And things may have changed due to the disasters in twenty-three to twenty-four. So I actually heard that from them, and which was pretty good. And they said, yeah, you can do it. I think I forwarded this information to, you know, because it's replacing metal roof with the old roof. So they went to specifications and for that, they've opened up a project. So they want to be a four-pointed project, you know, the project's progress and things like that. So knowing that they wanted to do that, I did a Gantt chart, which I sent to you folks, I believe.
I don't understand like Gantt, though.
Yeah, Gantt chart is just a, you know, it's just a, it's a diagram like this.
Is that what this is?
Yeah.
Okay.
What did you call it? Gantt, all right.
I made a mistake, I got it, and then it was Montana. So anyhow, and so this is the information taken from the RFP. And so it took like thirty-one days to create the RFP. Select board approves the RFP tonight, that'll be exciting. The bids sent to the contractors tomorrow? I'm thinking this week maybe. Contractor site visits, I queued up for August eight, contractor question.
And did you, and did you change it so that they don't have to come to a specific time?
No.
So you still want them to come to a specific site visit? Even though we all agreed that, we didn't think that was necessary?
Well.
If we're trying to get people.
You only do it once, and, you know, the, if you're in a spitters work, they really want the job, they'll come.
That's the problem.
It's a problem.
Well, let's see how it goes. I say we, I say we go for it as is, and then.
We could always wait again later.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this might be more attractive because, uh, there are two roofs involved.
Yeah.
Mm, that's true.
And I think that if we can send them, you know, if we send bids to certain folks that are doing standing team roofs, they might. Like, last time we put out the RFP, it just was on the advertising, a couple newspapers and on the website. It's a lot, you know, easy to overlook.
So contractor questions are due August fifteenth. Bids are due to the town clerk on September fourth. Bid opening with the Monday, September eighth. Contract is selected on the eighth. Contract signed, take a week to sign it, I thought it would be okay. And twenty days to complete the project from Monday, September twenty-second to October seventeenth.
So they have to be able, willing and able to do it this year if they want a bid, right?
And so, select board has to do two things. If they choose to, one is to select a color. And we should have a color chart attached to the calendar. And let the folks, and I'll quote this guy. Let the folks at the historic resource, historic preservation, folks said, do not do chartreuse.
Do what?
Do not do a chartreuse roof.
Oh, okay.
Which is a green issue, I mean, roof, icky thing, or a fuchsia roof.
So I, I like the second one in the top row, what do you think?
I'd be good with that.
Yep, done.
Cool.
Yeah, see, we can make a decision.
Zone five, great.
So.
Don't wait to miss it.
Which one is it again, is it this grade?
No, it's the first, first, second one.
The first one you touched.
From the left.
Oh.
Yeah, we just, one, two, three, yeah.
So this one?
Yeah, not the light, light, light gray, but the medium light gray.
So I'll include that in the RFP. I'll include a shot of this in the RFP.
Okay, they don't come with names? I mean, is this a, a chart that came from a particular bidder, contractor?
It's from the specification, that's in the RFP. And it's a color chart, excuse me, for what we're spec'd out in the RFP. In the, the material specification section somewhere in there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, let me see here, same as the roof, Kynar five hundred H Y L A R P V D F. So that's what FEMA specs out for hurricane proof groups. And that specification proves this color chart.
Oh, okay, so this is FEMA's color chart?
No, it's not.
No, okay.
So do you need a motion to approve the RFP or just a verbal?
I would say, you know, whatever you choose to do, I would do the motion, Michael, what do you think?
Um, can't hurt, I guess, it's, uh.
Yeah, I mean, you worked, you've worked so hard on it so far, it would be nice to have a formal approval, formal approval.
Yeah, so we'll have to do a cover letter too. You know, most of these are sent out with a cover letter, blah, 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 blah.
And you, and you're gonna draft some kind of a advertisement to put in the paper? Huh?
Sure.
I mean, it has to be advertised, right? According to our.
Yeah.
Well, is that something you're willing to do? Thank you.
Okay, and I don't know if you guys, if your contractors know a list of roofers that might be interested?
I can reach out to two. They're probably the same two you're gonna reach out to, though.
Yeah, we can come up with a list and send it to you.
Send me that forward to, and I know all kinds of roofers, I can send John's very well.
Yeah, I think the wider net we cast, the better. Because I think that the folks potentially are pretty.
In fact, with two roofs, you know, it would be more attractive than, you know, a small square roof group like the town offices.
Yeah.
So say you state what you have in for the town hall for a roof, do you state what you have in for that town office?
Roof, yeah, it'd be the same.
I think they should be the same.
Yeah, twice.
It's not too much different, what we chose from what's there now?
Yeah.
Except the one there now, rusted.
Well, we can, I'm sure we can find somebody who will rust a new roof for us if we want.
Okay, so you want me to do an advert?
Thanks, Skip. Is there a motion regarding the RFP?
I'll make a motion to accept the. I'll make a motion to accept the RFP as is.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Skip. So that's a pretty tight timeline for this going out, right? I think it's three days from now, right? Just to send them out, but that's enough time to get a cover letter together?
Sure.
Okay.
Because the cover letter is just gonna be, you know.
Here it is, look at the document.
Soliciting bids for blah, 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 blah.
So you want us to reach out to you with information on people we think it might be a smart idea to send this to? Okay.
Maybe, Robyn, and maybe panel two, three.
Okay.
Alright, so that's the roof replacement. So there were two other mitigation projects that were proposed for the town offices. Basement waterproofing and window replacements. So I have the basement waterproofing just about done. And that should be ready this week in draft form. So it's not gonna be, you know, twenty pages of stuff. You know, a lot of this stuff is. So that should be up for your review this week. Window replacements, I'm finding more of a challenge because there's so many choices. Albeit, the glass choices have to have some sort of laminate in the middle so it won't shatter. You know, similar to your windshield, because it has to be hurricane proof. But there's so many interior choices and exterior choices. Do you want, you know, metal overboard or double-hunged or wood? Do you want, you know, what do they call it? I forget what they call it, double hung? So, you know, that's a little bit out of my scope. So I did an inventory of the windows at the town offices last week. And if we replace them like-for-like, that would be okay. What do we want to do?
The only advantage, I think, is if you did put one double hung in there someplace, you could put an AC unit in there, right? It sounds like that's the challenge of putting an AC unit in there now, is that they're all casements.
So you would wanna change one of the small windows?
As I say, the three that are in the main office where we sit are all crankout windows.
Yeah, so you could replace one of those with something that, a little small double hung. But the other ones, why?
You could replace all of them.
Well, it is true that I think that, like, the casements are supposed to be a little bit, they seal a little bit tighter. And they'll last a little bit longer. Double hungs will get leaky over time. So I think the casements are a good, a good window for the long term. But if you had one double hung in there for an AC unit, that seems like decent.
I think a heat pump would just do the whole thing.
It would.
Will FEMA buy us a heat pump?
It's in your budget, inside your budget. Lots of money in there.
Why would you wanna change the size of the big windows? That doesn't make any, I wouldn't say.
I don't wanna do anything. It's up to you guys what you want to do.
Yeah, but I mean, that wasn't even, I had never even thought of it. I thought you just mentioned, do we want the same windows?
Right, you could do, you know, it's just like, you know, it's a clean slate, what do you wanna do?
I guess maybe if you're gonna bring this to the next meeting, and then we could look at those windows. So for instance, Diana, that front window, you might be able to get one unit that has two casements that open. The one that's like a single pane right there in the, in the meeting room. Right, so you wouldn't have to change the opening size. You could keep the opening size the same. You get almost the same amount of glass. But you might be able to have two windows that crank, that go into that.
You're talking about the one on the, on the south side or one of the big windows on the front?
One of the big windows on the front, yeah.
So they wouldn't all be the same? But what, but if, as far as like an air conditioner, why put it in that little room?
I'm not talking about that.
He's just saying to make it accessible, so you could open it instead of having it be fixed, right?
But they're not fixed now. I mean, well, whatever.
I can't remember. Let's revisit this. Yeah, let's revisit this at the next meeting.
I mean, they're double hung windows now, right?
I don't know, I don't remember.
No idea.
Okay, so expect those by the next meeting.
This is great, thank you.
This is great.
It's great for me.
And I'll reach out to you guys, because I don't know anything about windows. As long as they open, it's fine.
But there are some specs that FEMA requires, right?
Yeah, and there's a ASDM spec that they call out. And there's another spec that they call out. And they have to be quote hurricane proof, which means, you know, they can't really shatter. They have to withstand a two-by-four hurtling out the window at ninety miles an hour.
Oh, it's a pretty good window. It's got some fancy European windows.
Yeah, right. Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, cover work is ongoing, as I told you, those. So as far as I know, the Bucklake Brook degree removal has been completed. And on Lake Hill Road, one of the covered sets been completed.
Correct.
Is that it so far?
Uh, yes. The rest all need engineering.
Okay.
There's three others that need engineering.
Got it. Two or three on County Road, one on Dog Pond Road.
Uh, so I take that back. But one, one of them on County Road is done, but did not require engineering or permitting.
Do you know where the coordinates are?
Uh, no.
I'm just kidding.
I can get you those.
Eli, we'll reach out.
Sure.
And is part of what Nate is meeting with you on Monday regarding some of those engineering studies? Okay, great.
We didn't set up the drop that time. He said Monday or Tuesday. I dropped by there today, he was not around.
Yeah.
He dropped by what, the, one of the projects, yeah?
Oh, yeah, he said he was gonna be there today.
Yeah.
Right.
But he was not.
Yeah.
At least during the time that I was there. Uh, so maybe tomorrow, so I can catch up to him.
Did you notice they had signs up?
They did not.
Okay.
So I rang their bell and I said, I want signs up.
Okay.
They what?
They didn't put signs up.
Oh, okay.
Along the highway.
Okay.
So when I got there today, I forced them to put signs up.
Oh, they had some?
Well, they had trucks parked alongside the road.
Oh, yeah.
And there were trucks coming and going.
Yeah.
And so there was a concern about that.
Yeah.
I drove by today to check on, see if they had signs up after your message. And they were not, so I stopped and stomped my feet.
Nate was asked to, or, you know?
Yeah, but I think Nate, because they hadn't gotten there yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was gonna tell them.
So it's, they, they know now that they need to sign up.
Right, thank you. Thanks, Skip.
And lastly, for disaster four seven two zero, which is July twenty-two, twenty-three. So Town Highway twenty-three, twenty-four projects are ongoing. I took some photos there yesterday. And the cover they're putting in on Town Highway twenty-four is just massive.
Hmm, so huge.
Giant.
I gotta go up and see it.
Crazy.
It's deceiving. They, they fill half of it, or not half of it, they fill like two feet of the bottom of it with stone.
Just to keep it in place.
Well, more so that the fish can travel. They fill it with like big stones, so the fish can travel through.
How did, that's interesting, how would they do that?
They have to oversize the color to allow for that.
I have, it's a huge honor.
But it is big, it is.
It's a huge part, you know.
Do they have to crane it in?
The excavator will do it.
Excavator can move it, yeah.
It's just aluminum, so it's carrying light, so the excavator will just pick it up and carry it down. But I understand that's under delay right now.
So, the, uh.
We can talk about it.
I'm surprised that they, I thought that was all done, all the Jaren Borg stuff.
I thought so, too.
Yeah, okay, no.
It's definitely nothing that we were responsible for.
No, you would have done that all the.
So there's a delay?
Yes.
Go ahead, we might as well talk about it now.
I guess Jaren Borg found out that it was happening. And they were supposed to call ahead for a pre-construction meeting. And that phone call never happened. So the soonest that Jaren Borg can get here is the twenty-first. So everything's stopped until then.
Till next week.
No. Weird part is that the twenty-two, twenty-three bridge is happening. It's all fucked up. Jaren never, I thought that was the one that we were troubled with because he's already in the roof, he's already doing it.
You poured concrete.
Yeah, yeah, so I thought that was the one that Jaren Borg was upset about, but it's not, it's the one up above.
Strange.
That was another reason for me stopping and talking to the contractor. It's like, why didn't you call the state and why? And he said, it's not me, we're all set. So I don't know, I'm a little baffled with that. Why one cover needs to be a pre-construction and the other one don't? They're both compatible size. They're both working in the rubber by itself.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Yeah, so I'm a little confused about that.
So they're continuing on Town Highway twenty-three?
Yes. No, they'll have it, they said they'll have it open the end of this week.
But they stopped on Town Highway twenty-four.
And Town Highway twenty-four hasn't even started yet. They haven't even taken the old bridge out. They haven't done anything with the roof. That's why I'm, I'm just fully baffled by it.
Do you think they got their bridge numbers confused?
That's possible, that's possible. I mean, the design, the design would have the number on it.
Right.
It's all perfectly labeled. So I don't know how that could be. But, so anyway, we're, we're waiting on, on the upper one.
So when Nate gets here to talk with you, is he gonna have to go back and draw something up for those, uh, those, culverts that need the H and H and all that?
Yes. Yes, and I'm hoping that he can turn those out fairly quickly. Because, I mean, we're, summer's fast.
Do you, so you haven't bought, purchased the culvert yet? Because you don't know what size.
What size, you know, there's that, too, I have to order them. It may be a minute to get those, depending on the size, but. So that's why I'm kinda anxious to get with Nate and get him going on it. And hopefully he can just do a quick design enough to satisfy the state's needs or the FEMA's needs, I guess, they, they want. Well, both FEMA and, and Jaren Borg is requiring engineering on these, these last three.
The last three cover, no, not Town Highway twenty-three and twenty-four.
No, those are, no, no.
Those are all done.
Those are engineered, yes, that's all on print, that ink is dry. Uh, the next, the other three mitigation projects that we established.
The good thing about these projects is there's no timeline on it. There's timeline on that project and Town Highway twenty-three project.
There it is.
And they all have to be complete by October thirty-first.
What?
October thirty-first, they have to be completed.
For, for the big ones?
Yes.
But not for the other three?
No, because the other three were taking that money from the excess mitigation funds.
Yeah.
So we can utilize those whenever we want.
But the other.
We spend it really.
Is there a date by which you have to stop excavation because of the stream or?
I think it's October.
October?
I think you've got to be out of the stream by October.
Okay.
So essentially, we've got that long to hopefully get engineered and installed. But that's, it sounds like a long time away right now, but it really is.
I know, it's coming right up, I know, really fast. Yeah, here we are halfway through summer already, seems, seems like.
That's all I got.
Nice work, thank you.
Thank you, Skip.
We're gonna back up a little bit to Mr. Reed's update on the website.
Do we wanna finish the sand contract? No?
Oh, yeah. You're in, all right, great. Were you able to get in touch with them or?
It was.
You are?
Does not include trucking.
Okay.
Okay.
It does not include trucking, okay, thank you.
So that's either, comparing apples to apples, it's either sixteen dollars a yard or nine dollars a yard.
Okay.
And I can't imagine that.
That's a no brainer.
Yeah, it's a no brainer, okay. So I guess we need a motion to approve the bid for gravel construction.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we need to specify right now if we're doing pickup or if we're doing delivered? Or can we work that out later, as long as we?
Uh, well, we've always trucked ourselves.
Okay.
So I think you just got, just approved the nine dollars.
Okay.
So what was the, what was the trucking price?
Trucking price from gravel is seventeen seventy-five.
Okay. So very similar. Yeah, we can truck it cheaper than that.
Okay.
Right, that's, that's eight dollars a yard.
Right.
We can definitely truck it cheaper than that.
That's what, I'm sorry, you said that.
Is this the difference between the buying it, buying it at the pit and paying the trucking is eight dollars?
Yeah.
We can truck it ourselves cheaper than that.
Less than that, yeah, okay.
So I guess we need a motion to approve the bid from gravel construction for winter sand for nine dollars a cubic carat.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'd rather not, because they're a client.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. So I guess at this point, do we sign anything? Or do you, Robyn, you call them tomorrow and let them know? Is that typically how we do it? Yeah.
Do you take this back, the winning bid? Okay.
I take both of them back.
Okay.
Please.
And then Alfie, do you mind reaching out to the gentleman and letting know that we showed the other one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. And tell him thanks for submitting it.
Yeah, yeah. No, he's, he's not going anywhere. He'll, he'll be there for us in the future if we need, pretty sure.
Great.
So who's running it now?
Uh, his name is Matt Dwyer.
Okay.
And.
Oh, did the McCulloughs sell?
It's all within the family.
Oh, okay.
Young Scott has something to do with it, right?
Young Scott works, works as a company, but he's not in management.
Oh.
But, so it's Matt Dwyer, which is one of the McCullough sisters' son. And then Fred McCullough, who used to run it, his son is the other one. Those two are better managed. But I think they're clearly, they're a little expensive, particularly those sheer.
The cows using them?
Uh, I think cows does use them, yes. But, you know, it's right in their backyard.
Right, yeah.
That's been the age-old thing, because you can't truck it.
They don't have to truck it at all.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And then let's move on to the website update.
I'm gonna use Mr. Moll. John sets up. Sorry about that.
And I made these for you.
Oh, no, it's okay, I can't see the screen. But I am, you're right, so. Let's move back to the better.
Yeah. Whoops.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I told Carolyn Stewart to expect her.
Thank you.
Picture in the Gazette. She took the picture, so politics wanted to know who took it.
So this is an update on the website. No actions required. Um, recall, in December and January, you approved budgeting to revamp the website. Ben Whitty, who is the person with the present site, do the work for it. So it's been, he, Alex Pelz, and I have been moving along on this since early in the year. And it's pretty much ready, but maybe a little more refined. And it's pretty much ready, but maybe a little more fine tuning. Huge shout out to Alex, who's done all the design on this volunteer basis, and I think it really is sharp. I, I, Diana will continue to do the content, be the project manager for it. You know, I was a little up in the air in terms of whether we should go with a turnkey um website solution or stay local. Turnkey would have been more expensive, Ben Woody has been just super responsive and super talented, so.
That's good.
I'm really pleased with where this ends up. So, it's a nice clean design, um, you know, websites that are good should be pretty intuitive, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time going over it. I encourage you to do it when you have the chance, there's not that much content on it. You know, there's a nice menu across the top, kind of um organized by function, and then if you scroll down a little bit, um, you know, the uh kind of the main government engines of the town are listed here, um, and if you, you know, you can click on records up here to get to um agendas or minutes, or click under select board to do that, but it's also highlighted right here in this box, where you can see the most recent um minutes. This is a little slow, because it's still on a development site. Or um or see the uh date and of the uh of the next meeting. Any recent posts down here, that culvert photo would be a great post to add to our site. Upcoming meetings, the calendar view as well, like the monthly calendar view. And just another way of getting at the same information, uh contact information for the town clerk's office, um, you know, the rest of these are pretty self-evident. A footer that has that information. This meets the uh new American Disabilities Act requirement that started in January, and uh Boilerplate says it does, so that's that's a step in the right direction. So, I'm, I'm really pleased with how this is turning out, I think it's a lot better than what the town's had previously, and, you know, positions the town a lot better than as, as we can do and kind of for Wookiee. Comes in on budget, um, and when we put this online, which could be as early as tomorrow or sometime in the next week or so. Yes, go ahead.
I don't like it. I don't like that the heading, you, you look at that picture and it see, it says, it's not even like a complete sentence, and then you have to, you're drawn to that, and you don't see, where is this? Oh, Woodbury, up in the corner, seems like Woodbury should be in the the uh middle there. Woodbury, Vermont, a town of lakes and ponds. In Vermont's beautiful northeast. And people would think it's, it's not in the Northeast Kingdom, so it can't be Northeast Kingdom, but it, you expect it to say Northeast Kingdom instead. It's in, actually in central Vermont, but.
Northeast central Vermont.
Huh?
Northeast central Vermont.
Well, okay.
I like it.
I really like it, I went to it today and used it to pull up um ordinance that I wanted to look at, it was super easy, I did it from my cellphone, sometimes that's hard on other websites, it was really easy.
So this, one of the things that's new about, compared to the old site, is it flows to different types of devices. So, I'm happy to take any feedback, and obviously, at the end of the day, it's like what it's called. This is the design that's been put together by Alex, who does this for Wookiee, and, you know.
Could it at least say a town of lakes and ponds, so it could at least be grammatically correct?
It can say whatever you want, including having a Woodbury down here again.
It says Woodbury right up above it.
I know, but it's, you're, you're drawn to that, at least I was, drawn to that picture in the large print, and had to look around and.
Well, that's good feedback. The other thing I've mentioned is that, you know, this is not static, there will be some fine tuning once it goes online, so. Okay to move on? So, once this goes online, I will show, um, go document and show Robin, and Willie how to post to it. I'm happy to continue to be the uh content webmaster for it, but I don't want the town to be relying on media posts, minutes, and agendas. And I, and also, I should say that um to Alex and Ben Woody and I, I'll win the lottery tomorrow, it went to me. This uses all standard uh tools and development uh tools, so it's all sustainable, there's nothing in here that's tricky in terms of maintaining this. So, looking ahead, I talked to the library and asked them if they would like to have their site be part of the town's site. Town, eight hundred people, you know, how many good websites you can have, and they're very interested in it.
They're what?
They're very interested in that, but this is a good step one, and then we'll go back and I'll talk a little further about that. And the last thing, which is just to to mention, um, the domain, when this was, when the town took out a domain, is um the world's changed quite a bit since then, and the ORG that the town uses is really for nonprofits. And uh GOV is the domain suffix that is what towns use, ought to use, will be using in the future.
I wondered why none of our emails and stuff used that, right, the .gov?
It would be the same, what the website uses and what email uses would be the same.
So that would change?
They would be the same, so if one used ORG, the other uses ORG, it's, it's the same for everything the town does in terms of a domain name. So, um, I've, um, so to use a GOV domain requires a federal government approval, so I, there's no cost to ask if we can do that, so I have. And um, and there's no requirement, if they approve it, and I assume they will, that we have to use it, but if you, and, you know, there are, I'm not the only one that would have stake in this, Skip Amwood as well, but if you're looking at what makes sense for the town to go down the road, it would be to have a domain that ends with dot GOV, and, you know, I'd put on the sheet that it's twenty, thirty dollars a year extra, and you know, it's not, it's uh twenty or thirty dollars a year at one time, because for one year you keep both domains. So, anyway, that's, that's just something I wanted to put out there, and I'll keep noodling that along, and, and uh if it looks like that's a possibility, but you know.
So right now, the town, for example, the town clerk?
Yeah.
Is clerk@woodburybt.org?
Yeah.
So you're suggesting that if we won't go to .gov, it would change?
Yeah, what you do, um, you know, and I, I mean, one of the reasons I'm suggesting this, I've got the expertise to do a transition like this. For instance, what you do is, um, for all the email going to dot org addresses, you just send a reply back that says the emails have changed to the same name, but .gov instead of dot org. And then people know that they use it as an email address.
So it doesn't automatically continue to forward everything that comes to dot org to .gov?
We can do that, but it's a little more complicated, yeah.
Some people just deal with it.
I guess the last thing I mentioned on, I'm doing this from my laptop, um, and just wanted to mention, I've, I have informally assigned the AV laptop to Willie, because both, because it's one treasurer's laptop, and both, uh, Brandy is the link with tax clerk here and Willie need to have a laptop that they can use, so I suggested at least temporarily she use the AV one, she comes to meetings, so if there's a reason they use to do Zoom or whatever, she could bring the laptop for that, so that's a point.
So that's, you, but that's your laptop, you said?
It is.
So there's another one that, that, with the AV one, okay, so there's a.
Right, which Willie is using now.
Oh.
So, yeah.
And Brandy is using the treasurer's laptop?
Yeah. So, it seemed like that made more sense than buying another laptop.
Well, the AV one probably isn't used that much, is it?
No.
You know, so.
Especially if you don't have a lot of meetings. Right, and presumably Willie would be at a select board meeting, but we're being used.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I think that's it.
Good, thank you, we pass on our thanks to um Alex and Ben and Rob.
Yeah, and Alex is, Alex is just super.
I think it looks great.
Looks great, I like it.
And, and maybe it would look even better with the word Woodbury down there.
I like that.
How can I, I, can I post to this? Because I have an RFP that in the advertisement, it will be a link to a version of the RFP, a digital version. Yeah. So can I send the RFP to you and you post it? Yeah, there's the RFP for the, for what the um Cemetery Commission did, that's, it's old, but it's just up there, because we're doing the development, but yeah, sure, happy to do that. Okay.
So John, this isn't currently, is this what, when people search for a website, is this what they currently see? It's not in action yet, right?
No, I can put it on the old site.
Yeah, okay.
As I've been, as we've been, the last couple of weeks, I've been putting everything on the new one and the old one, so it would be a seamless transition. So, yeah, but like, if you're gonna tomorrow, I put it on the old one, yeah.
Great, thanks. Thank you. All right, I think we are on to Michael Gray. I've got, you're gonna have to help me organize in my brain all the different grant information that has come in, along with um that email from Nikki Sabato about, which I think Diana has up here, um, as the second thing, a joint meeting with the Planning Commission about regional future land use maps.
Yeah.
So if you could just give me.
I really can't fill you much in on that particular thing, the differences.
They're asking us to set up a meeting with the Planning Commission, and I don't know.
So I, I would suggest that we just try to do it as a select board meeting, unless you would not like to have a select board meeting taken up with that presentation. And we could try to schedule it for um a Planning Commission meeting night, which um basically, right now, there, there isn't a functioning Planning Commission. We aren't meeting at all. So, but we could use the third Monday of the month, and select board members who want to come, could come. Or we could have the official select board special group, and then I would get to advise.
Can you explain to me what this is?
Uh, well, part of a town plan um and and a regional plan.
Good night, John.
There are land use maps that designate different parts of the town, that could be used for like development or, you know, um, so that's basically, um, if you look at the old town plan, or the new old town plan, or the there is a land use map in that town plan, and there are areas that are designated for um no development, development, and other things like that. Basically, those are the two biggest categories. So, the Regional Planning Commission has been working on redoing um the regional plan, um, and in that, they had to create land use maps, and I think that's basically what they're gonna be sharing with us, um, is the regional land use maps, which um would include Woodbury and would include, you know, what and again, I'm assuming this, I don't know for sure, but I think that's what basically they'll be presenting to us is the land use map for the whole region.
I think this is a.
Not just, it's not just the Woodbury land use map that they're gonna be showing.
Is it worth me forwarding this email to you, or?
I've been getting them.
You have, okay.
I haven't really dealt with any of that yet, so I just wanted to wait to see what the.
I think this whole project by the Regional Planning Commission is a step that they're required to take
It is.
in order to comply with the new act of fifty changes that were made last year in the legislature.
Right, and it's also part of, of the public process for them for the regional plan that they're, that is pretty much almost completed.
I went to one at the webinar on this subject, and even though I should know more than most about it, it was like yeah, it hurt my brain, no.
So ideally, they would like the Planning Commission and the Select Board to meet with them.
Uh, yeah, yeah, and you know, we could do that remotely, or they would probably give a presentation like the folks that came tonight. So it would depend on whether you wanna, you know, take up time in a select board meeting, I don't know how long the presentation would be, we could ask them. Apparently, they're scheduling them, and their schedule is filling up, so. That's the problem, not ours.
I wonder how you guys feel, my preference would probably be to do it on a select board meeting night, and maybe just try to keep the agenda light on other things.
We could do it on that first. The second Monday, second Mon, the second Monday meeting of the month, yeah, we'll try to keep it a little bit light.
Yeah.
The second Monday is, okay.
It would probably be August, right? And is there a chair of our uh Planning Commission?
There is not a chair, but I am the CVRPC um town rep, and I, I would be happy to be a contact person to these folks that are and I could, I could let them know that that's the night that we would like to have them come.
If you would, that would be great, thank you, let's, let's try to plan on that, mostly what they say.
So it would be August eleventh.
I think the next one after that, right?
Twenty-fifth. So that's your working time, right?
What is it, the?
I think that's what Liz, you, you were suggesting, right?
Uh, I just meant, no, not specifically, I guess I just meant during any select board meeting, rather than having a separate meeting.
We're meeting again on the twenty-eighth of July, right, and then we would meet on August eleventh back here for like the big meeting, and then it would be the August eighteenth meeting, I think.
Wait.
Wait.
There's July.
August eleventh would be the second Wednesday, second Monday.
You're right, you're right, you're right, so it would be August twenty-fifth, yeah, you're right.
You're talking about going, doing the meeting at the town hall?
We could do it remotely, it sounded like, probably.
That's.
We can do it here if you want, I don't really, doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, it doesn't really matter to me, too, I guess.
As long as we keep this one, this meeting, a little lighter, um, some of the other things that we have to do.
I guess I'll have to refresh my memory, you want to do the small meeting in the town office on the second meeting of the month, right? Which is the fourth Monday, is that what we've been doing? I'm obviously confused.
Yeah, so like in two weeks, we would meet there, on the twenty-eighth, but I don't really care, like, I'd be fine with doing this at one of those meetings, or at one of these.
If we're gonna invite a couple of the remaining planning commissioners who might be interested, I think we should do it where there's a little more room.
Right, we could like relocate it, though, and do it here.
What?
We could do it here instead.
On, that would be on the eleventh.
Whenever.
Sounds great.
Unless you don't have a separate meeting.
How long it would take for them to do this presentation, so we would have a sense of how big a chunk of the meeting time would be.
Okay, yeah, I, I, for instance, when these guys met, they wanted forty-five minutes, I told them they had fifteen, so they actually did it, they moved right through it, so.
So the date that you would like to, um, technically to?
The eleventh, it sounds like, am I right?
And here, right, that's there.
Fifteen-minute presentation?
I like it.
Ten.
Ten, Liz says. We'll go as high as twelve and a half.
Or maybe we, oh, okay. We could go, we could join a meeting in another town, that would make sense, but.
Thank you, Michael, for doing that.
Sure.
And then, there was another grant that.
Yeah, so there's uh. Yeah, so there's, so there are two grant agreements that have come in from the state that either these sign or maybe I should have these signed tonight. One is for the Valley Lake Culvert project. And that one I would like to discuss with you guys a little bit. The other is for a grants and aid grant, which, you know, Alfie and I have been talking about different parts of town that would then go be a part of this grant. And this probably won't happen until next summer, I think, at this point. This would be an addition. But it's for twenty four thousand dollars, which is a good chunk of money from the state. And we usually have the match, we usually do with labor and material and equipment rental. So this is kind of one for the future. And then this one, we would put an RFP out this fall and then the work would be done next summer.
Then we have to budget for a substantial match for that, right?
Yes, so that's what I wanted to mention to you. The, the upper limit for this project is two hundred thousand dollars. And Nate Seacard's design work, he estimated that the cost would be two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And that was a couple of years ago, so I would imagine it might be more. So, you know, if you wanted to budget this for next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty seven, could do that. Or we, we have a chunk of mitigation money left over. We could use that as the, as the match.
Can you describe this project again?
So, yeah, do whatever.
It's the, the Valley Lake, it's a box culvert, concrete box culvert. It's right by the end of the building, the old store building.
Okay.
It's been in the works longer than I've been here.
Right, yeah, a long time.
The metal culvert is basically rotting out. And it has to be a cement box culvert because of the proximity of the buildings that it would kind of be designed to go into the wall that, for a bank. And it's already built in by the, the old store, back of the old store. So I would hope that in the future, the two other Bailey Bridge Road and Church Street, that maybe those could be metal culverts that wouldn't be as expensive as this project, but.
And how, how much time do we have to make a decision about this particular grant?
Well, we've spent money on the design work already.
Yep. But that was not our money, right?
It was Grant's money.
That's what I mean, yeah. It's, that paid for it.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, if we could sign, if, if you're willing, I think we should sign the grant agreement tonight and, but we do have time. Nate Seacard would be doing the RFP for us and he would also be the project manager for it. So, and if he's suggesting that we wait on the RFP until the fall, I mean, you could wait a few months on the year.
Then we'll be doing our budget in the, in the winter, like January. By that time, it would be nice to, to know how much we have to budget for.
Right.
So if we get.
So we get asked Nate, you know, what does he think it's gonna cost at this point?
We're gonna need to have that by January.
Right.
But he, but we could ask him sooner than later to, to go back, yeah.
We could ask, we could ask Nate to give us an updated figure. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, and this, these maps are twenty percent, right?
Yeah.
So whatever the, whatever the total price is, the town.
Actually, the matching guy is ten percent.
A ten percent.
Just for this figure. I'm looking at the model one.
So you're saying the match is a percentage?
That the match is a percentage.
But if it's, but if the total that they'll give us is two hundred thousand dollars and it takes an extra seventy thousand dollars, that's a pretty high percentage.
That's Nate's percentage plus the overage.
The, the match, the ten percent that they have in the agreement is basically what we would be responsible for if it's more than ten percent.
Which it will be more than two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We, we need to come up with the, the balance.
Do we think we can use FEMA funds for that, for the balance?
Uh, that would be a question for Skip. I mean, the, the mitigation funds, well, it depends on how much money is left over. Whether the town wants to use that.
You could use it.
We can.
Okay.
I, I mean, we're, right now, we have this twenty five thousand dollars in reserve for the project on Buckley Brook and Tatter Road. I don't think we're ever gonna see that money from the federal government.
What do you mean, we have that in reserve?
We, we.
Did we budget it?
No, it was at a former select board meeting, we discussed putting the match of twenty five thousand dollars to kind of set that money aside from the leftover bridge.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, and Skip did that. So that's an option. I mean, I don't, it depends on whether you wanna have a, let's say, a hundred thousand dollar project added to the next year's town budget.
Well, it could be more than that, too.
It could be, yeah. I have no idea what Nate will come up with. But I, I can, we can ask that question right off and, and we would have a sense of that.
And how urgent, I mean, I know you said the culvert's starting out, like how urgent is it? Is it like real bad or?
It is real bad.
Okay.
Technical term.
Right.
And Josh Hatchell would not dare move that heavy quartz molder over the culvert. But that's why it sits there. Yeah, and the Bailey Bridge Road culvert is even worse.
Okay.
So we, we have time, if we can send an email to Nate to see if he could give us an updated estimate. We could even, we could come back to this at the next board meeting?
Yeah, the, I mean, yes, we could do that. We could wait on, and I could let the contracting, the D Trans people know that we're just waiting for some new information to sign this grant.
I think we, I think we should sign it. I think our problem is that we need to know how much money to budget for the match for next January.
I guess maybe I don't necessarily understand the process of, if we sign it, are we obligated to do the project?
No.
No, we are.
Oh, okay. Great.
They just wanna know if they were, you know, thinking about proceedings so that money's in a pot.
That was important information.
So what are we specifically committing to if we sign it? Are, are we not committing to anything specific?
Well, if we don't sign it, then we're gonna have to replace the culvert at a long extent.
Or I guess I meant if we sign it today, like without knowing the cost.
I think the reason for it is they have a certain amount of money allocated for these projects. And without a signed document, they can't allocate that money.
Okay, so this is like to help pull the funds.
They might allocate it to somebody else.
They might give it to somebody else.
Okay.
I agree. I think we should sign it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it, I mean, it needs to be done. And I don't think, you know, we're just gonna have to figure out how to make up the balance of costs.
Now, how long does an H and H study stand for? Is it good until the project is done? Does it run out after five years and you have to have another one?
No. I, I mean, I, I don't know that for certain, Robyn, but I'm pretty sure that it would still be good. I mean, that's what all the design work was based on too, that Nate did, so.
So yeah, they usually go with the Q one hundred, right? So they take information from the last hundred years to, to call it, to conglaborate that H and H study.
Oh.
So conceivably, it probably wouldn't change for another hundred years.
Okay.
I think that's what that, that's what that amounts to.
Skip.
So I have a question for you, Michael. So the amount awarded this action is two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Then I turn the page and it says total preliminary estimate amount is two hundred and seventy eight five.
Okay. That's, that's Nate's.
So is that above and beyond the two hundred thousand dollars?
No, that's the total cost.
Okay, so if it does come in at two hundred and seventy eight thousand, we would need to do ten percent of the two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, for the match.
For the match, so that's twenty thousand dollars. And if it comes in more than two hundred thousand dollars, the town would be on the hook for another seventy eight thousand dollars.
Well, part of that seventy eight thousand dollars, we are, are ten percent match, the twenty thousand dollars.
We, we're, if it's a two, we're in, on the hook for two twenty.
Yeah. But ten, we're gonna go above, well above the ten percent match.
Right, so I'm, I'm just reading this little document here. It says two hundred thousand dollars is the award.
Yes.
And it said, our match is ten percent. So right away, this award is gonna cost us twenty thousand dollars.
Correct.
No matter what happens.
Yep.
Right.
So if the cost of the project exceeds the two hundred thousand dollars, are we on the hook for that?
Yes, that's the amount. The, the maximum amount for this grant is two hundred thousand dollars.
So based on just these documents, we, the town could be on the hook for ninety eight thousand dollars.
Seventy eight. You don't, I don't think you add the ten percent on to the excess money. I think the excess money we're gonna pay goes towards that.
The seventy eight thousand, let's say, let's say it's eighty thousand dollars that we have to pay to have the work completed. We've already paid, we paid the twenty thousand dollars. They want us to ten percent match.
Okay.
What? Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty percent. It's part of that, yeah, right, yeah.
I think if, if it comes in at two seventy eight or whatever that estimate was, we're on the hook for seventy eight thousand.
Plus, plus the twenty percent.
I think that.
No, no, you're paying twenty percent of the two hundred thousand.
Just a.
Ten percent.
No, ten percent.
Whatever, whatever the percent, ten percent.
So that's twenty thousand.
If the overall job is, is two hundred, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, let's just use two eighty. The state is gonna pay.
Two hundred.
Two hundred is their max. So we are on the hook for the tw, the ten percent of two hundred plus the eighty that's over it.
No.
No.
Eighty is the total. The, the twenty, the ten percent match is within that eighty thousand dollars.
Yes.
If the project's two hundred and eighty thousand, then we would have to pay more than that, yeah.
It's like sometimes with the grants and aid where the amount that we expend in, in our match, sometimes our match is more than what they've awarded us and that's.
Right, but most of, most of that is in common.
Yeah.
Our machines, our labor, which is very much different than this. This is gonna be a contracted price.
Yeah, but we, we paid the ten percent out of the balance of the cost of, of the work.
So I think the way Skip, Skip put it is that if we've got a two hundred thousand, if we've got a two hundred thousand dollar award, it's gonna cost us another twenty grand to use that award, right? Or.
I can ask the D Trans, I, I don't, I don't.
And then we, beyond that, we have to make up the fifty eight thousand, right, to get us to.
It could cost seventy eight thousand dollars.
Yes, yeah, yep. But I think it's gonna be more than that. This is two years ago, that estimate. It's, there's no way that it's not the same.
It's gonna cost more.
Yeah, we're probably ended.
We'll have to continue to look at the deficits.
What is, what?
Mitigation funds to make sure we can afford.
That grant? I've heard it at all.
Michael, is that something that we can or should verify? Like I'm hearing, like I'm hearing Alfie very clearly say one thing and Skip was saying the same thing as Alfie and we were all saying the opposite. So do we need to double check?
I can ask that question.
Okay.
But if we're not obligated to do this project by signing the grant form, I think we should sign a grant form tonight. And we can ask these questions later and then it secures that money, it sounds like, for Woodbury.
You're not really obligated until you sign a contract with the contractor.
Okay. Yeah, so if we, so if the contractor comes in in January or February, even after we've done our budget, and it's four hundred thousand dollars, we don't have to do it.
You do not have to do it. The grant just goes away. The money goes back in there.
I guess we would need a.
Rescue culvert.
Motion. I guess we would need a motion from the board to sign the grant agreement.
I'll make a motion that we sign that, we sign the grant agreement for the Valley Lake Road culvert.
Okay, you wanna also make a motion for the grants and aid?
No, let's do it separately.
Okay.
More work for you.
No?
I mean, when you're, in your minutes.
Is there any, are there any, is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that grant's just for periodic places around the world, you know, it's not labeled to one specific spot.
Michael, do you need everybody's signature or just one?
Yeah.
Probably the chair is the.
Yeah, so the, the other grant that I have here is for the, you know, the rest of roads, general permits and general work that gets done pretty much every year through the grants and aid for improvements to the town highway, different, you know, town roads for, you know, erosion and stuff like that. We do this every year.
So we have to apply for that? Can they tell us how much we're eligible for?
We've already applied and this is what they have determined, how much money they have that they can give to us, twenty four thousand dollars. And then Alfie and I have discussed different projects. But we haven't really decided on any yet. Alfie will put together kind of, you know, how much for different projects that we, that we just decide on. And this work probably won't get done until next summer. But it's for fiscal year twenty six, which means we have until September of twenty twenty seven to, to finish it.
This is something we sign? We do this every year, pretty much?
And there's no match?
Yeah, there is a match.
But there is a match.
There is a match. And usually it's all, it's a six thousand dollar match. And usually by the time the road crew accounts for their time and the materials that the town spent, like culverts or whatever, and the equipment rental of the town machinery, we more than need that.
So we don't have to budget especially for that?
No.
Thank you.
You could. I mean, it doesn't hurt to budget because it does come out of the town highways. I mean, you're paying the road crew, you're paying for the materials, but, yeah. And then there is one other grant, Better Roads grant that we haven't got the grant agreement for yet. But that's for the Wilbur Road. We were kind of talking about that a little bit. And chances are parts of this, parts of Wilbur Road would be covered under this grant that we're, the grants and aid grant.
Oh, wait a minute. So, so that we just went over the second grant, which is the grants and aid? And then there's a difference, the Better Roads grant is separate?
That's pending. I mean, we, we have received a notification of the award of the grant. We don't know, I think we do, is it twenty thousand dollars that it had? So we know the amount. We just haven't got the formal grant agreement for us to sign and then for us to send to Joe Flynn, the Secretary of Transportation to sign. But, so technically, no work can be done on the Wilbur Road until that grant agreement is, is signed by Joe Flynn. First, we have to sign.
By whom?
Joe Flynn, the Secretary of Transportation. So this is another grant agreement that could stand to be signed also.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we want to do both of those in one motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Not to the Better Roads.
Oh.
We don't have that one yet.
We don't have that one yet, okay.
We're waiting. I did bug Dan about that and it's, it's not his thing to deal with. It's, there's a whole section of contract oversight, D Trans thing that they do with the grant agreement, so.
Can you remind us the name, the grant that we are signing tonight?
It's for the grants and aid.
And it's an aid, that's what it is.
Yeah, and it's for road, sections of road that are hydrologically connected, yet to be determined by a road crew, what we'll be working on.
I'll make a motion to sign the grants and aid grant form.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously, is that a single set, signature as well?
Yeah, it looks exactly the same as the one we just. So I will scan these and send them, um, to the person, uh, that's dealing with these grant agreements, and then we'll get a notification from, um, back from the state trans that has been signed by, um, Joe Flynn.
Okay, thanks, Michael. We all caught up on grants?
Uh, yeah, uh, we did talk about the Better Roads Grant, um, which is the one, other one that's pending, um, and that's enough for the road crew for it now.
The ones that, the ones that we already have, those projects are done, the ones that are already planned, and.
Well, um.
From last year, I guess?
Alfie did start on the, um, Grants and Aid grant for fiscal year twenty-five, um, today, I think.
Today, King Pond.
King Pond Road.
Oh.
What's that one? We can, we can talk about it in your commissioners' report.
Okay.
And the, and the Wilbur Road grant is basically doing, um, is trying to prevent the erosion and flooding of the camps down, um, saving pond. So it's kind of, that, the problem with the flooding, um, the last two years is the culvert that the Better Roads Grant will be upsizing, and then the Grants and Aid, there are some other sections of road that were part of the Better Roads Grant, that, um, that just isn't the total funding in the Better Roads Grant to pay for the rest of the work that would also address that, so. So whether we get to those this year or not will depend on what the road crew's able to do, but if not, we'll, we'll get, stopping the water from overwhelming the culvert and running down the road, and.
Yeah, that'll be clever, I mean, it's very steep.
Yeah, yeah, well, it just needs a bigger culvert, is what it is.
So it'll go downhill faster, or?
Well, it'll, it'll go down in a, in a brook bed that has been established.
Oh, there is a brook, oh.
See, what happened was, is the, the culvert couldn't handle the water coming down to it.
Okay.
So it overflowed and jammed down the road, and then it just went, went downward. And created, um, you know, washed out the roads some, and the bank, and then trenched, um, the hillside above, so all of this, you know, sand and gravel came right down and into the, the pond, actually, lake, um, yeah, so.
So there is a, a brook, I mean, a main channel that.
Yeah.
Right.
Thanks, Michael. It's a good, uh, transition right to the road commissioners' report.
Okay, okay, uh, well, like I said, we started this, the, the grant on King Pond today, and it probably will take us through the week, I'm sure. We've been grading in between storms, rainstorms, and we've actually started mowing some. It's, it's a lot to do, you know, because the mower takes one person, and there's twenty to do both, you know, it's just, it's, so we're trying to spread ourselves out to make ourselves most efficient.
What, what is the King Pond road work?
Uh, it's, uh, cleaning out the ditches, and stone lining them to prevent from erosion, and burn removal, so the water doesn't follow the burn and wash out the road. It just kind of sheets off to the side, is more what they are looking for. So that's all paid for by the grant, um, and then first we have to seed it, mulch it, and all that, uh, before we're done. I actually talked to Susan.
Sawyer?
Susan Sawyer?
Sawyer, Sawyer, thank you, uh, and when we looked at the project with the state people, she came out and wanted to know if we could give her access to her field. Um, just for a walk-in, or if she wanted a contractor to mow it, or whatnot, so we achieved that today, she was very happy. It was just, we took some of the ditching material and sloped it down off the road so she could get to her field. So we made a happy customer today. One thing I want to tell you guys about our bucket loader, it's diagnosed with a bad pump, or a weak pump, and I think it's gonna be expensive to repair. I'm nursing it as long as, as long as I can, as far as I can, um, but the mechanic that worked on it is saying that it's, might be caused from the mower. Which is a headache that everybody wants to avoid, but it's, it's very much a headache.
So the roadside mower goes on the front of that thing?
Goes on front of the bucket loader.
And it's just too much for it?
I don't know if it's too much, or if it's, if it's hooked up incorrectly. When it was first purchased, the, the, the sale, uh, the service manager that I spoke to said that he worked on it, because he wasn't service manager then, he was an actual mechanic.
The loader you're talking about?
The loader, yeah, and he said that it was, it was something with the mower itself that was causing a problem. I, I'm not real clear on what that is yet, but I just want to make you guys aware that we've got a pretty expensive fix, repair, coming on that.
Do you know like how much, roughly?
I haven't, I haven't got an estimate yet.
Okay.
How old's that mower?
It's, uh, fourteen, so it's getting some age, it's eleven years old. So the, the first thing we gotta do is do what they call a flow test, and that tells you what part of the pump is failing. So, in order to do that, they have to lift the cab off of it, which, as you can imagine, it's a lot of labor. So I've been sort of waiting on getting a price for that, because, I mean, we've got some time, we don't use it a lot right now, except for, for the mowing. So I haven't, I've been a little nervous to get that number, to be quite honest, but I will, I'll get that estimate and see what's.
The real critical season for that is gonna be when we have to start mowing sand, right?
Correct, yes.
So you've still got the big rental loader, excavator, whatever, the excavator?
Yeah, that's the one, I, it's on King Pond right now.
That's what you're using, yeah?
Yeah.
So lifting that cab thing, is, does that get done right at the town garage, or does it have to be transported someplace and have that done?
Um, it could be done at the garage, it would probably be cheaper if we transported it down there, because in shop is always cheaper than portable.
Oh.
You know, so, um, we could probably save some money by bringing it down there, if we wanted to go that route.
To where?
It would be to Milton Cat, they're the dealer for it, and that's in Williston, so it's not out of this world, just gonna stick, go with it. So, that's pending, that's, I'm still doing some research and trying to figure out what the best way to do that, but, um.
Did we ever get that new trailer?
Have not got the new trailer yet, um, the money is just available a week ago, so, um, but I, I looked at a few, and, that's soon to, soon to happen. I figured it'd be wise to wait until the league got back, and all that, so.
So we had budgeted for that?
Yes.
Okay.
I hope so. That's my recollection, I think it was ten thousand, I think is what we've, I don't know what the.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ooh, good.
So, I, we're just trying to keep up with it, oh, there's, there's a lot going on, um, you know, once, once I get ahold of Nate, and that process starts, I can decide whether we're gonna have to keep the excavator for another month, or not, or maybe we'll let it go back while we're waiting for his design, and then we get it, get it back again, another one. Um, but I can't make that decision until, until I get a timeframe from him.
Ten thousand, yes.
And then that's gotta be, those projects have to be done by October, it sounds like.
Uh, anything in the brook.
Yeah.
Unless, sometimes, if the weather's right, they'll give you a little bit longer, and that's a Jaren Borg thing. So, and, right now, we have a good relationship with him, so.
So hopefully you can catch up with Nate tomorrow, today, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I'm gonna make a point to, I'm gonna have to go, go there several times throughout the day. I did talk to, did one of his, well, it's actually a guy that used to own the company, and he sold it to Nate. Uh, he's on site on the bridge that's happening, so I talked with him pretty lately today, super nice guy.
So Tim, Ruggles?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
So he's working for the contractor?
No, he's working still for Nate.
For Nate, okay, right, okay.
I'm puzzled too, why is he on site working, I mean, he's actually working, but I guess he's, likes it so much that he wants to be gone.
Semi-retired, maybe he likes it.
Um, so, yeah, it's just kind of a juggle, trying to get, keep everything, you know, going, trying to get some of the roads mowed, some of the grading done, some of the grant project which we're on now, and then the other, the other mitigation projects. But I've gone as far as I can now with the mitigation until we get engineering. So, um, yeah, that's, that's all I've got, I think.
Oh. I have not a question, but, um, a thing, something to bring up, so, this is kind of along the same lines as the two culverts that we replaced, um, for the people up on Cabot Road, so you guys got this letter, I, I, we all got a letter, I don't think you've seen it, Alfie, but it's, um, basically, it's, it's from a close neighbor to those people, and they, I guess, had had a similar issue back during one of the floods, and I didn't get a ton of follow-up information, I responded and said that we could talk about it at the meeting, and I think this is probably the appropriate time, um, so I can go back and get more info, but basically, during one of their floods, um, they're seeing that one of their trash cans was crushed by, I don't know if it was the town road crew, or if it was a volunteer that was just helping, but either way, they had, I guess, requested for the town to replace it, and I never heard the request, so I'm guessing it just got lost in the shovel somewhere.
It was a while ago, it was a while ago, probably.
Right.
Yeah, I remember it very distinctly.
You do, okay, I don't, so, um.
And I, I very much gave the green light for Brandy to go do it.
Oh, okay.
Brandy brought it to my attention, because they're friends, I guess.
Okay.
So, not to pin the blame, I'll go get a, get a rubbish can if that's what needs to be, but it's an issue that I thought was already taken care of.
Gotcha, do you know, like, did, did we talk about it, did we approve it, I like, don't remember it at all.
I don't think it was that big of a. But she took offense that, she took offense to the fact that you wanted to take the other one and reuse it.
Yeah, because it was really, it was not what's wrong.
But she didn't think that was, that was, thought that was wrong.
Well, I kinda think, let's just replace the trash can, and let's not talk about trash cans or culverts anymore, like, we're, we're all done.
But we would like to know, um, that Mrs. Perry was satisfied, is that correct?
Yes, she was very satisfied.
So you replaced the culvert and.
Replaced the culvert under her driveway with a fifteen-inch black. And also provided a fifteen-inch black for the one that was.
What did the, end up costing for one? Sorry, never mind, it's probably in here somewhere.
Yes, there's definitely an invoice.
And did they wanna keep the metal one?
Of course.
Okay. Just in case.
Yeah, so they, they, I'm sorry, but they cannot be unsatisfied.
We got a, we got a letter that said, a very nice letter, saying that they're really happy, yeah, so I think we're good to go.
We talked to her extensively after, and I, you know, we talked a lot, and I got the same vibe, where she was happy.
Um, so, I can reach out to the other person, I know you know who it is, I'm not gonna name drop, but, and just let her know that we talked about it, that she'll be hearing from you about getting the trash can replaced, do you need information on what exactly kind of trash can, or are you good? I'm happy to get info and pass it to you, if that's helpful, or you can just put it in your court to talk to her.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of how to.
Hopefully the trash can has been resolved.
It's a fifteen-dollar item.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
She did, but it was not, incapable of being used, it was, it was just a small jam in it.
Okay.
So that's why I said, I want the old one, because I can use that to shop in the town garage.
Yeah.
If we're buying a new one for hardly a reason at all, I want the old one. And so, that's why this was, I thought it was dealt with, it never got dealt with.
Gotcha.
So, and, and let's just, let me just add that, that there, these two people that live right next door to each other, and the culverts issue, the whole culvert issue, they don't get along, from my understanding, so it's tit for tat here.
So you still haven't done, done the work for the other?
Yes, both culverts are repaired, everything is done.
Oh, okay, great, well then, yeah, done.
Let's get that garbage can.
I didn't realize that you were, that you had done the first one.
The first one we didn't replace the culvert, we were able to get it flushed out.
Oh, okay, all right, because they didn't wanna pay the extra for, yeah, okay.
And we also rebuilt the stone wall that was damaged during the flood.
So Alfie, I'll just shoot her an email, tell her it's coming.
Hopefully the garbage can will put this whole thing to bed, and we won't have another flood in that area.
Well, yeah.
Sounds like that's pretty much your report, here.
Yeah, I'm still talking.
Well, I just, on the other updates in business, I'm just gonna put it on there and just make a pitch for the signs again, I know you guys are busy, but.
Uh, yes.
The bicycle signs, we're trying to make sure they don't.
They're all in, they're in place, they're sitting in there, sitting on the shop floor, I just gotta find time.
And in fact, we ordered signs for the town offices too.
Correct, those same thing, we'll, we'll do those all at the same time, um, I guess pray for rain, because that's probably when we're gonna do it.
I think we're getting some soon.
So you're gonna stay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I mean, for the executive session.
All right, so, thank you, Alfie.
Sure.
Hope you don't feel like I cut you off from trying to get us out of here, yeah. Updates in other business, we'll prove, I don't, but you have a great evening.
About the, uh, the animal thing, the goats, should we get, uh, the license I sent?
We got the one? We have it here.
We do.
We're waiting to get a, I don't know whether we need a, we, well, the, oh, he's leaving, so we can talk about it later. The, the request came, this supposedly formal complaint, that the state police told these people to file a formal complaint with the select board, and I don't really know what that means, so.
For grazing goats?
Huh?
Goats grazing?
Yeah, no, goats grazing on the neighbor's deck, and things like that, yeah.
So I had a, I had a conversation with the owner of the goats.
Yeah.
And they have gotten out, and they, um, uh, this individual's had difficulty kind of, uh, finding a new home for most of the goats. And he said that especially the, the bucks are a little bit, uh, more aggressive. But he does have a home now, for the bucks in particular, um, he had a very good relationship with the folks that made the complaint, and they had agreed on a price, um, that is compensation, and, um, he's gonna do his best to keep his goats contained. And um, he's gonna do his best to keep his goats contained.
So I guess the adoption of the ordinance will go back on the buck.
We can check that one off.
Check it right off.
Thanks Skip.
Bye.
Goats.
Check.
Check.
Signs, check.
Signs, we can knock that one off too. Um, we can do the bill from payroll orders later. Last meeting, we had a, a request from the listers for an increase in their hourly rate from twenty to, at least twenty-five dollars an hour. And it's on our agenda to, if in agreement, approve that.
Oh, I thought we already did.
We never approved it.
Okay, gotcha.
So I guess we would need a motion.
Um, I don't remember the specifics of the amount. I don't think it was the same for everybody. Do we need to go over that? It was, I think, one, one was a higher rate than the other two.
The chairman was the higher rate.
Oh, you have it, okay.
I think, one of you had that.
I.
You have it.
But anyways, I had her give me another one, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it right here.
So I'll make a motion, um, to increase the compensation for the listers at a rate of, or to a rate of twenty-five dollars an hour for the, is it the chair?
Yeah.
And then twenty dollars an hour for the other two listers.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes and the raise is approved. So we, going back to Robin's, uh, she, Robin brought up the, uh, complaint from some folks, um, around trash and a pile of trash. Specifically, I think it's Route fourteen and Ainsworth. Maybe there's two separate, I don't know, two separate, um, places. I did drive by, I don't know what it was, the one on fourteen looked like it had been cleaned up maybe a little bit. I didn't see any piles of trash.
Yeah, a truck loaded with trash.
Still a truck loaded with trash there.
It could be that the ANR is after them again.
Well, this was a complaint from a resident in town who went directly to the state. And that was reported onto me as the health officer. So at some point, um, I think Danny, you had suggested maybe a letter would be the best way to start.
Well, I think the Ainsworth Road one, it may have been cleaned up.
Okay.
I keep forgetting to stop by, but I know one morning it was like, not just bags of trash, but some of them had been ripped open. So you could see that when going back, going by under fourteen and ever since then, it, but what I've been able to see just looking in the road, that part is cleaned up.
Okay, alright.
We had kind of thought, I think, Lizzie and I talked about the fact that the, the family has had a tragedy recently. And that we, maybe we.
Give a little time.
Back off on.
Yep, sure.
I don't know why the, the.
But the last I heard, it wasn't payment numbers that were living in that house.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Hmm, yeah, I don't know.
Maybe we can revisit this at our next meeting and actually write a letter, in the meantime.
Give a little more time just to.
Yeah, and maybe do a couple of drive-bys just to see if stuff is being cleaned up.
Sounds good to me.
And then start with a letter at the next meeting. I'll put it on future agenda items.
Can I remind you of the letter that would be going to the same people for the tire, the new tire done?
Put that on hold.
I know you did, but this, that's another one.
Why did we put that on?
Cuz of the tragedy.
Oh, thank you. Yep.
You might wanna check in with, I don't know if it's still this guy named Ryan McCall, who, that's definitely an active site that he's been dealing with for many years, if, if he's still in the same position.
He is.
Who is Ryan McCall?
He is a, um, a National Resources kind of compliance enforcer sort of person. He's dealt with both properties. Um, and I think they're, they are on kind of an active list for him that he monitors. So, um, just to see what he, if he's aware of it, if he's doing anything about it.
Okay. So maybe I should, as the health officer, reach out to him. Do you have his contact?
I, I can give you his contact information. I have it in my computer.
Okay, I'll send you an email right now.
Okay.
As a reminder.
I, I've actually, I'm keeping lots too here for things I'm supposed to do.
He has a whole list of ongoing Woodbury cases.
He does, yeah.
And they don't ever seem to be going anywhere.
No, he, I mean, I don't have much. You, he can commiserate with you, but he, he hasn't been very effective in doing it lately.
Yeah, he's tried in several cases to get people lined up with a program where the state will, but will put in a septic system for them. But it takes, uh, the owner having some incentive to get it done. And that hasn't happened, so. It's frustrating, but he's, keeps at it.
So, um, is Swenson, maybe it's gonna be a little bit longer of a conversation? So maybe we go on to this other thing that I added, which was, um, animal control officer. Uh, so we got a phone call today from a resident who had a note left on, um, on her door. She was rather upset. It was left by the animal control officer. She took a photo of the note and, uh, texted it to me, to Abysat. Um, she was really upset by the note. The note was definitely, um, I didn't think it was scary, um, which is the words she used. Uh, but it, uh, our animal control officer didn't investigate necessarily. Um, what Ed did, I believe, and we should get his side of the story, is, um, uh, simply leave a note, uh, based on a neighbor's complaint without finding, getting the other side of the story. So, um, which brings me to this other thing about, uh, the having Ed call all the unregistered dogs.
We might need to talk with him first.
And just, just to talk about how to approach that, or if that, yeah, I think that that's probably.
Pam has sent out two cards now. Would you like her to call those people before it goes to Ed?
It might be. I think that might be just a safe.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, until we have a chance to speak with Ed and.
I don't know.
So I don't know, you think it's worth inviting Ed to a select board meeting?
I don't know if it, that might feel kind of weird, like, it might make sense for just one of us, you or any of us, to just talk to him.
Mm-hmm.
Um, like, cuz we, first of all, we haven't heard his end of things, but either way, just, I think a conversation.
He's, yeah, if, he investigated and those dogs have bothered other people. And the dog owners claim that their dogs never leave the property. Yeah, he needs to take those things into account. Plus, we don't have a lease law, so.
The problem now is that, um, he, that investigation won't be able to happen. I think that, uh, this individual was upset enough that, um, she was going to, she talked about filing a, filing a restraining order. So we're not gonna be able to have a, have a conversation or an investigation. I think it's gonna have to be moving forward. This, this is probably the best way to, to approach it, is to get two sides of the story.
Right.
Before, um, before leaving though.
And then I would say like, maybe a little more diplomacy in the note too, just like, a little more friendly sounding.
Yeah, yeah. So I can, I'll be the one to contact Ed.
Sure.
Robin.
I left a message for him today, so.
Okay, well, maybe he'll call you back if you get to, talk to him first.
Okay.
Um, just let me know. And then I'll touch base with you to get his contact. It's probably in our.
That yellow sheet of paper that Pam gave you? Do you know what those are called? Let's, yo, yours is blue.
Mine's blue.
Yeah.
So it should be down towards the bottom, I think.
Yep, there it is. Okay, thank you. Alright, I think we're done with that topic. Um, and then moving on to Swenson.
Well, Swenson's gonna take a little while, so maybe we should. I don't know.
I think we kinda have to, otherwise we're, you know, it won't be on, we won't have it on HCTV.
What are, what are we talking about, about Swenson?
I don't know.
Oh, neither do I.
I had drafted a letter to propose to them a while ago and you guys made some comments. I did put a year on it, it was August something, but maybe a year ago, maybe it's about.
Yeah, it was a while ago.
Yeah.
And this is just around.
Around how much we're getting paid or not paid for those additional, all those trucks of grout. I mean, I didn't realize it until a couple of weeks ago and I actually saw one, cuz I didn't know. But the big V-shaped trucks that they bring the asphalt in, they're using those and.
So what is our agreement right now with Swenson?
We're paying six cents a.
Six and a half.
For cubic, six and a half or a cubic foot of, of granite. And they tell us how much.
The usable granite, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So does that not mean grout, or does that just mean the blocks?
Yeah, just the block.
Gotcha.
But not even the whole block?
Yeah, it's what they can actually make into something.
Right, that's how they measure it.
And how did this agreement, is this just from the kindness of their hearts, or is this like an Act two fifty law that they have to?
Well, what the Act of Fifty permit says is that they will abide by an agreement that they make with the town.
Okay.
So Act two fifty didn't actually tell them how much to pay.
Okay.
They just said that, you know, so if we can't come to an agreement, we could go back to Act two fifty, but.
But the, the agreement that we are operating under now was established in.
Quite a while ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nineteen ninety.
Makes sense that we would renegotiate that.
Yeah.
It's time.
Yeah.
Two thousand nineteen.
Alfie, how much more wear and tear is it putting on the road than going up to the new entrance?
Oh, it's substantial.
It's what, it's like another half mile, right, from the old entrance to the new entrance?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And it, and it's not just the granite blocks. Now it's, now it's the, the grout trucks. Which are, they're using tractor trailers and, you know, I'm hearing that they're gonna do it for two months.
Yeah.
So.
I think we should have some kind of a sign up there, especially coming from Cabot Way, warning them about the curve going down the hill, right there by my daughter's house. Cuz a couple of different times, she's almost gotten, taken out by a tractor trailer.
Uh, what would you want the sign to say? I mean, would you want to label the corner, or do you, what do you? I mean, we could do a curb ahead or something, or something like that.
Is it the same drivers over and over again that run for, for them? So they're know the road.
But not always, right? Don't they sometimes have, I feel like sometimes they have.
Well, they have, they have Canadian truck drivers that come on occasion to get the bigger blocks and stuff.
Yeah, so somebody might be up there who isn't familiar with the curb or the other.
Uh-huh.
Okay. And Nick, can I get back to, um, how do we go about, do we invite, uh, representative from Swenson to a meeting? Um, do we, what, how did it happen?
We talked about sending, starting out and sending them a letter.
Okay.
And this is as far as I got. I don't remember. Um, Chris and Lizzie, please review the draft attached. I really think it's better to negotiate businesslike rather than calling them to a meeting.
Okay.
They suggest a letter of, um, the Act of Fifty does not include a specific amount. It just says that the company will comply with an agreement. And then it said, there are a few more facts I have to check before finalizing the letter. And I, I'll have to review this all again to see what it was, but maybe I'll just.
You might forward it in that to us again?
Yeah, well, I'll work on it.
Okay.
If I could find it, if anything, I don't remember. It was two thousand nineteen when they got the new entrance permit and they took over the road. Didn't leave us anything, which is somehow was allowed to happen.
Yeah, well, it wasn't much of a road at that point anyway, but.
No, but it was.
It's pretty fun trail.
Yeah, you could go through there. I mean, maybe not in a car, but, well. So, yeah, from nineteen ninety-one to two thousand one, it was five cents. From two thousand one to the present, it was six and a half cents.
Yeah, so it's time, twenty-five years.
So do we wanna have a sense of what we wanna ask them for? Like, should we figure out what inflation is between then and now? And maybe like, do that math and figure out a price and then ask them, instead of cubic feet of usable granite, just cubic feet of granite that they're chalking?
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't need to go there. We've talked about this a million times. Somebody used to always bring that up. What about all that granite that they're gonna, that's not reusable? But that's just not the way they do business. They don't have a scale up there, so we can't do, you know, we can't charge them based on.
Could we charge them per chalk?
What?
Could we charge them per chalk?
No, oh, I don't know about the grout. Yeah, we'll have to think about that.
It seems like if they're hauling a lot of other things now with such as blocks, we'd wanna probably consider that, right?
Right, for, yeah, for the grout, we're gonna have to figure out something else.
Well, the first agreement, they were never taking grout out.
Right.
It was just the big blocks.
Right, the grout's only been a couple of years, right? It started that last year maybe.
Yeah, so I think adding something for the grout, cuz it's still causing damage to our roads.
Exactly.
In fact, more because there's more grout.
And they're profiting off it, so.
Of course.
Makes sense.
I'll just work on this.
Well, and everything's more expensive.
Have something for next meeting.
Right. But I do think they've been good neighbors to us, so, you know, like, I think we can probably come to an agreement that's done in a nice way.
Yeah.
I would love it if they would crush some gravel for us.
Yeah. Maybe they would.
It's right there.
It's not a bad idea.
If they would put up a pile of five thousand yards a year or, or whatever, some, some amount.
That's a deal, yeah, okay.
That's a great idea.
Be a really good trade.
Good compensation for, for us, that we could use that gravel all over town and it's right here local for us.
And then, yeah, so they have a loader up there?
Oh, they have several loaders.
Oh.
Oh, yeah?
So.
Huge loads.
You wouldn't have to pull up, we wouldn't have to bring our loader up there every time?
Uh, well, that would be, that'd be harder to negotiate, I'm sure, but, you know, some companies won't let strangers use their, you know, I mean, it's insurance standing and liability, so that would have to be negotiated at some point.
The only other thing I have on our updates in other business is that you and I need to come up with a list of roofers. Um, we could do that at another time, or, but we need to get this through.
Like, really, soon. I have two and you have two, and I know they're the same two.
Okay.
Those are the two I'm thinking of. Alan, um.
Yep, we should sell, send it to the Borah Gardens.
And, um, I can't even think of his name right now. You know them?
I think we should send it to Jacob Rogan.
Oh, okay. I didn't think of him.
Hutchins, Hutchins Roofing.
Hutchins, yeah.
They're a bigger company, but.
Or Rob Roofing.
Rob Roofing, yeah.
Yeah, I think that that might have been, they're out of Saint J, right? I think that that was one of the ones that Skip was suggesting.
Aaron.
We could send it to Aaron Garten.
Yes, thank you. Couldn't think of it.
I had none of that too earlier.
Borrell.
Yeah, sure.
I have no U R. U R E L L.
Yep. That's a pretty good list.
Good list, yeah.
Done.
Perfect. Send it to, do you wanna send that list to Skip, or do you want me to?
Um, do you mind?
Nope, uh, I just gotta transfer it to my bar list.
Yep.
So I'd like to make a motion that we go into an executive session.
Okay. And, uh, we need to state the reason and if we're inviting anybody.
And we're inviting Alfie and it's, it's pursuant to one V S A three, one, three, A, three. It sounded, it sounded anyways.
Is there any discussion? There are none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.